Members of the City Council, please attend a call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, December 9th, 2014, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Evans? Mr. Meeks? Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Rowe?
Thank you. I sent you, by mail, three documents. Hopefully, you got it on Saturday. One was on the diversity study. And as you know, our consultant from, let me get the name right, MGT of America is going to give us a status report on the study. But because she has a scheduling conflict, she's going to be with us live, but by video.
Just a second.
Just a second.
So is this Skype?
It's either Skype or...
Skype's cousin.
Yeah, Skype's cousin. And so, with no further ado, I might introduce Bernetta Mitchell on your left. Can you hear us and see us okay?
Yes, I think you will. Thank you very much.
Good. Would you give us your status report on the study, please?
Well, I'd first like to introduce Reggie Smith, who is the executive in charge of this project. And Reggie and I are working closely together in completing your disparity study. So I'm going to let Reggie do the front end of the presentation today.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to come to you via Skype, modern technology, to give you a status and update of your disparity study. Now, my name is Reggie Smith, and I am the executive in charge for this particular study. And with me is Ms. Bernetta Mitchell. She's the project director, and she's the one responsible for the day-to-day activities of the study. We are very pleased to have been working with you on this study, and we appreciate all the help and cooperation that we have received from the city staff beginning this day. It is a cooperative effort, and it takes a lot to get these studies done. And we really appreciate all the effort that's been shown in order to get us where we are today. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bernetta Mitchell, and I'll give you the brief update of where we are, and then we are available to ask any questions that you may have related to our progress in this study, if anything, and maybe you may have questions about the study. Bernetta?
Thank you. As you may be aware, beginning September 2013, we kicked off the disparity study, which included some staff interview and data evaluation component. We also talked about scope and make sure we were on the right track in what business categories we were going to analyze for the study period. Since then, we have had some complications with data, but I think we finally got it down to a point which we have enough data in which we can begin to what we call clean and have analysis ready. While we were working through the data, however, the task of the study did not stop waiting on that. So what we were able to successfully complete were your custom census surveys, which is one of your measures of availability. We conducted a public hearing. We also conducted a focus group. We conducted interviews with business owners, about 28 interviews, one-on-one business owners. We also were able to obtain the commercial permits data that will help us with our private sector analysis. So we have been doing a lot of the tasks behind the scenes while we work through the data. As we talked about in our kickoff meeting, and as we also have been talking about since we started the study, the data is the foundation of this study. And as long as this data is accurate and correct and as thorough as it possibly could be, it is more, the study would be more defensible, more reliable, and valid. So we spent a lot of time trying to make sure, and working with Mr. Ammons and purchasing as well, trying to make sure that we have everything we could possibly get, excuse me, everything that we can possibly get to make sure that we have a solid foundation. The data that we've received, we have been working on for the last couple of months trying to clean that data. And when I mean clean, there are some things in your data set through no fault of your own, which you don't know, which you don't know, that we need to have in order to analyze. And that is the race, ethnicity, and gender of the vendors that you utilize. That also includes the type of services that those companies provide to the city. And so we individually, line by line, of all of your data, have to go through and fill in those gaps. And that's what we consider to be cleaning of data. We are 90% clean with all of your data, and we can begin to start running your preliminary analysis from that point. So over the next couple of weeks, only with just a few days of Christmas break, we're going to be pulling things together for your analyses. We're going to be sharing that with Mr. Ammons, and he can choose to share that with whomever he likes, of what those numbers begin to look like as it relates to the utilization of MWBEs in your spin. So over the next couple of weeks, we're going to finalize a couple of chapters that we started working on. We've also written the legal framework chapter. We've also written the policy chapter that we have already shared with the city and have comments back on those. So we'll begin to start writing the other chapters and working through the data. Our timeline that we have proposed in finalizing your study is going to really be driven by the amount of time that it takes to understand, to understand the analysis, and make sure that it makes sense to the way that the city actually procures its goods and services. And so that's where we are. We're very, very close. We were hoping that you'd have a nice Christmas present and be done with the study, but we're not quite there. But we're very, very close. Any questions?
May I?
Yeah. First of all, thank you, Ms. Mitchell. As far as timeline, what are we looking at?
We are projecting, or proposing, projecting, to have the draft study completed by January 15th.
Okay. Of the 28 business owners that you talked to, did they all reside in Portsmouth, or did you go out throughout the Hampton Roads region? How did you make the determination of who you interviewed and why?
Excellent question. We determined very early on that your relevant market area was the Portsmouth, MSA. It includes counties such as James City, Hampton, Portsmouth, Gloucester. I always get tongue-tied with that county name. So there are several counties that are included in your metropolitan statistical area. So we took a random sampling of firms in your market area, not just in Portsmouth, but outside of the Portsmouth area as well.
Okay. Ms. Moody?
Does the study, Ms. Mitchell, also include purchase orders over a certain amount? Or is it strictly relationships with vendors that we have through procurement contracts?
We are analyzing all dollars regardless of the size of the purchase order, and we're looking at all spend in the areas of construction, A&amp;E or professional services, services which would include janitorial services, consulting, and goods. So we're looking at all dollars spent, purchase orders awarded during that time period.
And that's the point I was going to make, that the database is all those transactions. And we don't, our accounting system doesn't pick up gender, or ethnicity, or race. And so what they have to do is look at the transaction and then fill in the blanks. And that's where their legwork comes in.
That's the cleaning process.
Yes, sir. That's the cleaning process. So imagine having to do that for 200,000 transactions.
Yes, sir.
So that we, I don't know, 10, 15 years down the road, don't have to do another diversity study. Nothing against y'all, you know, not spending money with you or anything, but are we going to track that very thing going forward?
Yes, sir. And remember, there's a protocol that we have to follow, because this was a case out of Richmond that got challenged and went up to the Supreme Court. And it says, if you're going to do this, it's going to fit within this prescription. And that's why this data has got to be good. Because if you ever, someone tries to assail this, you want to make sure that you're on very defensible ground.
And if I remember correctly, Ms. Mitchell, this study is only good for seven years. And at the end of the seven-year period, we need to do another study to make sure that we're one in line and have the right goals that we've established. And to be able to do that after seven years, you've got to do another iteration. Is that correct?
Just about. The courts have not specifically defined the time period, but they did say that you need to have the most relevant data for the time period that you're looking at. So anywhere between five to seven years, you should reanalyze your spending with MWBE firms and see if you've been successful in increasing utilization. So the courts have dictated, well, not dictated, but they have suggested around that time period between five to seven years after you've completed the study.
Yeah, and not only that, you need to make sure that your remedies are still good for the problem that you've identified.
Absolutely.
So we will identify problems, discrepancies, or whatever, in this particular study, and then make recommendations for remedies to resolve those issues. And then in five to seven years, you need to take another look at that to see, number one, what kind of progress have you made? And number two, do you have the same issues or different issues?
Ms. Moody?
The letter we received indicated that you had 17,000 transactions. Is that transactions left to analyze?
I reported, Bernetta, on our conversation that you were down to 17,000. That was about 10 days ago, and you probably have a different number now.
Oh, yes. Last count of about 10 o'clock last night, when I was still working on it, was down to about 3,000. So we're just about done.
Three? One, two, three?
3,000.
Good. Yeah.
Out of 200,000 records, that's pretty good. But 17,000 as of the last count, Mr. Rowe, you and I both.
Yeah. These are all great questions. You guys are really up on this.
Thank you. So January the 15th, we're looking at the first draft?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then after that, when do we get into setting whatever goals or whatever aspirations that we need, and the areas that we deem that we have our weaknesses? And then how do we monitor that ongoing to make sure that, one, we've got the thing in place? And then, two, I'm interested in how do we get out into the marketplace and let them know that we are serious about minority and women-owned businesses? Because a lot of them, and I've talked at great length with the city of Hampton, they're going through their seven-year cycle now. And a lot of that was, the first couple of years, people just didn't think you were serious. They didn't want to waste their time with spending money on bid and proposal process if they don't think they're going to get to work. And so how do we alleviate that so we don't kill the first couple of years of trying to convince people that we're open for business for everyone, and we're serious about your bid?
Excellent question, Mayor. I think the first thing is, once we get these studies to a point where you understand what you have, and you're able to then go out and talk about the findings of the study, the council will need to adopt a study, say that we accept this information, and then you will take our recommendations and rewrite some of the policies, or write a policy to implement those recommendations as part of your procurement process. And then from there, you will monitor whatever process you set up. I'm sure you're familiar with Portsmouth Public Schools, in which they adopted our disparity study that we completed for them, and then hired a consultant to come help them write the implementation, write the program, and implement that program so that they can incorporate that as part of their day-to-day activity. And that will be the same process that the council should consider as well, if that's what you want to do. But once we give you the study, then you will take those recommendations and write a program based on the recommendations of the study and move forward that way. We will provide you aspirational goals in your disparity study so that you can kind of have some benchmarks on what your utilization should be across city procurement.
Okay. Thank y'all very much. This was very good, very helpful. Thank you. Y'all have a nice holiday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and have a great evening.
Where are they at, by the way?
Greensboro. Reggie, where are you?
Greensboro.
In Greensboro.
Oh, something in Greensboro.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. The next item is, Carol's going to give you a briefing on the CAFER for the fiscal year that ended 2013, 2014. Our audit partner, I'm sorry. Our audit partner will be making the formal presentation tonight, and then you have a resolution to receive and file the report. And then we can have further discussions about the CAFER, much like we had last year, at your leisure going forward. I had the chairman of the board of Dominion Resources, now think about that. He was on the VMI Board of Visitors. His name was Bill Berry. And Bill says to me, he says, "John, I just do not understand your CAFER." Now, here's a guy that helped create Dominion Resources. And what he was saying is that I can understand the CAFERS from the private sector. And so there's been a big push, starting around 2001, to make at least part of this document read much like a document that you would see for the private sector. And we've had a series of iterations or pronouncements that come down from GASB. And Carol will tell you what GASB is. Starting with GASB 34, we're now in the '60s. But GASB 34 said that for your general fund, you had to put a value on everything, every sidewalk, every curb, every gutter, every building, every swing set. We already did that on the enterprise funds. So as we look at this document, it gets more complex. There's more pronouncements that are coming down that are going to have an impact that will create on a balance sheet, large liabilities. For example, you know about OPEB, well, we've got some reporting requirements that we're going to have to incorporate next year for VRS. But having confused you, I'm going to let Carol start the presentation on this particular report.
Good evening. Gee, I'm pleased to present to you the CAFER for the fiscal year 2013, 14. This represents the culmination of several months, many months, of very hard work on the part of my accounting staff. And I want to start by recognizing Peggy Morrison, who's our controller, and all of the accounting staff who put just a tremendous number of hours of their own personal time into making sure that we meet this deadline. The state code requires that we have an audit, an independent audit of our financial accounts each year, and that the independent auditor make a presentation to the governing body in a public meeting prior to December 31st. Our annual report is called the comprehensive annual financial report, but it's commonly referred to as an audit. And we, as the city management, are ultimately responsible for the content of that report. As John mentioned, the governmental accounting and financial statements differ from the private sector. Our financial accounting is governed by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which is GASB. And that has a very different focus from the private sector. The proprietary funds, such as public utilities, are accounted for more similarly to the private sector, but in general, it's a measurement focus and basis of accounting. Our auditor is currently Cherry Becker. And just to give you some background on what the audit process is, when the auditors come in, they don't look at every single transaction. Their role is to express an opinion on whether the financial statements taken as a whole are materially correct and free of material misstatements, and represent fairly the city's financial results and financial position for the preceding fiscal year. So the auditors identify items that have a reasonable possibility of causing the financial statements to be materially misstated. They look for areas of risk. They look for certain types of transactions. And they design tests to, number one, determine whether our system of internal controls is working, but also to make sure that the way the statements are put together are accurate. The fiscal year 13, 14 audit resulted in what's called an unmodified, also commonly referred to as a clean opinion. The audit report that you have also includes several compliance reports. There's internal control over financial reporting, the OMB Circular 8, 133, report related to major federal programs. And the auditors finally are required to do compliance work regarding certain state requirements as well. And those guidelines are set forth by the state auditor of public accounts. On the compliance side, we did have a material weakness that was reported, and that relates to the public utilities' construction in progress. We had a prior period adjustment that was required to be made because the construction in progress has not been closed out to the permanent fixed assets in a timely way. The public utility staff is continuing to review and correct those amounts, but you should be aware that we will expect to have another adjustment in the current fiscal year, assuming that all of those corrections are made by the end of the fiscal year. Also on the compliance side, we had a few non-material compliance findings. And again, you can find those in the compliance section of the audit report, which is near the end. It actually is the last tab in the report. The social services had two findings related to, one, security controls for terminated employees and business continuity plan. There was a finding related to timely filing of the highway maintenance report. And finally, there was an instance where we had one economic interest disclosure statement that was not filed in a timely way. And in all of these areas, the departments responsible for these compliance areas are working to make sure that procedures are in place so that these deadlines and other issues don't come up in the future. But again, the one related to public utilities will extend into this fiscal year as well. Now, turning to the general fund, which obviously is our major fund for the city, the total fund balance as of June 30th is 71.1 million. Of that, we have certain portions of that fund balance that are already committed and that are also non-spendable or are restricted in some way. The unassigned portion is 52.2 million, which is a decrease of 16.2 million from the previous fiscal year when you take out the anomaly of the pension obligation bond proceeds from last year. This balance represents 21% of your fiscal year 14 revised budget as of today, and that exceeds council's policy target of 15%. So that's a good thing. Cash and temporary investments in the general fund totaled $50.4 million at the end of the fiscal year. And there'll be a chart in a minute that will show us graphically. But our actual revenues came in, it's pretty much exactly on target, at 216.7 million. Expenditures came in slightly under budget, 1.8% under budget, which is 6.3 million. This is our statement of net position, and this is for all city funds. You'll see in the first tab in the financial section of the report is the government-wide statements, the balance sheet, and the statements of activity. And this includes the adjustments that John was mentioning, which are intended to make the governmental funds look more like the private sector. And you can see, then this includes not just the general fund, but all of our governmental funds, including our special revenue funds and our capital improvement fund. And you can see that when we get to the unrestricted net position, it's minus 198.7 million on a government-wide basis. And part of the reason for that is because we, in the past, pension liabilities were reported in the notes to the financial statements, and the actual liability itself did not get reflected in the numbers. But because we issued the pension obligation bonds, we actually turned that into a hard liability. But there's going to be, GASB 68, which we'll have to implement next year, relate, not only us, but all governmental entities, relates to putting the pension liability on the face of the financial statements. And I am sure that we will find there are a number of localities that will end up with a negative unrestricted net position, just because the size of those pension liabilities are so large. We will have to report not only the city's liability for our own too-close pension plans, but also the, our proportionate share of VRS's total liability, not only for the city, but also for the component unit for the schools. And those liabilities are expected to be very significant. And also to give you a heads up, GASB has already issued an exposure draft related to doing the same thing for OPEB. So that will only, you know, add more liability to all of the government's financial statements. This chart shows you our budget to actual for last year. And as I mentioned earlier, revenues were just about exactly on budget, and expenditures came in slightly under. The net revenue over expenditures, we had planned to have that be 141 million. We actually came in slightly better than that by 6.3 million because of underspending. And we had other financing, net, other financing sources and uses of 58.9 million, resulting in a net change to fund balance of minus 193.6 million. And obviously, the majority of that related to the transfer of the pension obligation bond proceeds. So you can see the fund balance at July 1 of 13 was 264.7 million in total. And when you take out 18.9 million in reservations, most of that is committed fund balance, where city council has adopted ordinances committing that fund balances for a variety of reasons. Our unassigned fund balance is 52.2 million. So the next question you probably have is, well, how does that relate?
Go back.
Okay.
The fund balance on July 1 of 13, 264 million.
Mainly because you had 168.4 million of pension obligation bonds that were clearly parked.
When we got the money, it got parked in the general fund.
And then it went right back out.
Went right back out.
Yeah.
In the next fiscal year.
So your next question probably is, well, how much of that is available over and above our policy limit? So the unassigned fund balance was 52.2. Your policy limit is based on 15% of the current year budget. That's 36.6 million. But we also have some expected and potential uses of that money as well. You will be considering tonight an ordinance to appropriate 600,000 to return to the state as part of the state's budget solution. We have some additional service costs for Hampton Roads Transit and 300,000, and these are just rounded. That will be included in a series of mid-year budget adjustments we'll be bringing to you in January.
That was the holdback that we did?
Yes. Yes, it relates to the additional service costs for the current fiscal year. You may recall, as part of the current year budget, we created a debt service sinking fund to help soften the impact of a temporary increase in debt service costs. We still have 400...
So where's that going?
That money is set aside, and we, our plan is to use a portion of it between now and 2019, so that we, rather than having a spike in our debt service costs that we have to cover, we know that that spike is only for a few years, and then debt service costs come back down. So that was a way to...
Smooth it out.
Exactly.
So that's in a hold. It's... Is it Al Gore that says it's in a lockbox? I'm asking, what is it holding for? It's gonna be in a lockbox.
It's being held for the debt service. That was structured in this year's operating budget, so that it smoothes it out, so you don't have to spike a tax increase, and then, two or three years later, the debt service amount comes back down again.
Is that on actual debt service costs, or is that on projected debt service?
Well, it's on projected, which will be our actual
It's gotta be projected.
But we know what it is. So it's projected because it's going to be in a future year, but we know what that number is.
Yeah, but it's based on actual
Yes, sir.
Costs.
Real costs.
Yeah.
Yes, based on a principal amount that we know and
Interest rate.
That we know.
You may recall also that in last year's CAFR, there was a $400,000 difference between the amount that the schools showed as due to the city and the amount that we showed as due from the schools. That related to encumbrances that the schools had opened last year. They still are carrying that amount on their balance sheet, and at some point, we're going to have to reconcile that. So I'm showing that as a potential use of fund balance, but we, you know, council can address that at a future date.
And that's subject to change.
Explain that again?
Last year, the schools had $400,000 in encumbrances. They
I got that part. Why are they still carrying it on the balance sheet?
I can't answer the question as to why they're still carrying it on the balance sheet, but it is still on their balance sheet, and it's over and above, right now, they have about a half million dollars on their balance sheet, over and above what's been formally re-appropriated by council. I think they'll probably be coming back to the council to ask for that money to be re-appropriated, but for right now, it's important that you know
He's just covering it.
You know that in our fund balance, we assume that $400,000 was due back to the city, and if that money gets re-appropriated to the schools, it's going to have to come from fund balance.
But what's the holdup? What gets me is, okay, I would think this would have a sense of urgency. The school system hadn't won the lottery, as far as I know, so why aren't they sending that request to council? Have we asked them?
We have asked them, and I think it gets down to a very basic difference of opinion on the definition of encumbrance.
I mean, we've been talking about that definition for two years now.
Yes, sir.
Perhaps when we have a new superintendent
Well, we keep saying that, but, you know, we
It is frustrating.
Yeah, I mean, we keep talking about the same thing over and over. Encumbrances, their definition versus what the law says.
And George has reported on the exchange of communication with their attorney, and not because George is our city attorney, but George is right. This is the good news that Sherry brought back from Richmond. In fact, you'll have a ordinance or a resolution tonight on your agenda to appropriate. This is the give-back money. We're helping the state balance their budget because of their shortfall in revenue.
The guarantee of school health funds.
Yes, the last item on the list is, you may recall, when the schools went to a self-insured insurance program, they asked city council to backstop any claims that they would have that were over and above what the projections were, and they estimated the $2.8 million. I think we're all hoping that they are able to cover it, and we don't end up having to use any of that, but to be prudent, we're showing that as a, you know, potential use of fund balance.
But if everything we know comes true, we should have most of that $2.8 million dollars
We hope.
If not all of it.
Not all of it.
We have a way of tracking that without waiting to June 30th?
Let me ask the superintendent for his status report on their health costs.
We gotta keep it available. I mean, we made the commitment, so
Which is why she created it and put there.
And that's why it showed up here as being, think about everything in a bracket as being in a lockbox.
But we should get a quarterly report on it, is what I'm saying.
Exactly.
We shouldn't have to wait till next December to find out whether it was 2.8 or whether it was 2.
And I'll follow up with Pat and find out.
Well, and the other thing that's important to note, they don't begin that program until January 1 of 2015, so we'll only have a half a year by the time we get to the end of the fiscal year, so they don't have any experience yet.
But I'm sure that if they have a request that at a certain time, that that would be reported, they would have to do it because they were elected, just like we are, and they are accountable, just like we are, and as such, we are all public servants
I'll touch that one.
Spending their taxpayers' money.
But we agree that when they went to self-insure, that we would make sure that we backstopped, and so we've got to fence off the money in the event that they do need to cover those costs, and so that's
That we have backed them up.
That's a great idea. All right, go ahead, Carol.
So the total of those soft or coming soon uses is $10.5 million, which leaves $5.1 million over and above the council's 15% policy limit that's available. And as I think we've noted in previous presentations, our goal has been to bring to you with the proposed budget cash funding of certain CIP projects, because we really have, you know, we've sort of tapped out where we ideally would like to be with our debt capacity, and we really don't have the capacity to take on additional debt service in the general fund. So we're trying to generate enough fund balance and keep enough fund balance at the end of each year that we can apply that to our one-time uses, which is an appropriate use of fund balance.
So now, those figures there for you going, that already includes us purchasing not only the recreation facility as well as 801 Crawford, all of that's included in those numbers?
Yes. There's $16.6 million in fund balance, almost $16.7.
We did that in the press.
And I have a list of everything, if you would like it, that shows everything that's been appropriated by council so far, and yes, it does include 801 Water Street, the 3% bonus for the constitutional officers, and some other appropriations that have been made.
All right, you can wait.
Which is not too shabby.
No, especially when it was, what, six months ago,
we were talking about being over the
Well, being conservative. On that, we didn't want to over, you know, over us.
Well, and at that time, too, I think we also said that we were not projecting that we'd be coming in under budget, and it's always difficult till we get to the end of the year to know where the departments are going to actually end up. One of our other significant funds is the Public Utility Fund. Their net position increased from $163.2 million, which is, we stated, ending fund balance for last year, to $169.8. That's $6.6 million, or a 4% increase over the prior year. And again, for all, I think we showed you this on the report, all city funds and operations' net position totaled $295.8 million, which is $150.6 million decrease from last year. We always seem to have, it would not be a year, it's like a year without sunshine, without a year without Gatsby statement changes. We implemented Gatsby 67 this year, which is financial reporting for pension plans. Because we have our own city pension plans, we were required to implement that statement this year, and you'll see significant changes in the notes to the financial statements as a result of that change. But the big one is coming next year, and you'll be hearing, if you haven't already, as you go to regional meetings or go to state meetings, you'll be hearing more about this. VRS has been talking about it for some time now, because it is expected to be so significant for all of the localities that participate. And as I mentioned earlier, because we will be recognizing those significant pension liabilities in the face of our financial statements, we expect that we will continue to have negative net position, and that there will be a number of cities that will be in the same situation. And that concludes the presentation on the CAFR. As John mentioned, we'll have Krista Edoff, who is the partner for Sherry Becker, here at your regular session, to give her presentation of the audit, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I noticed on your list here for committed on the fund balance, we didn't have the purchase of the pines. That was already done prior, too.
That was handled in the last fiscal
In the last fiscal year, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And our audit partner will be here. The next item is an update on the EPA settlement, and you've got talking breaking points before you. It's this document right here, James, we'll do one for it. James was quite successful in getting the penalty reduced by 50%.
Okay, good evening there, vice members of city council. I'm going to give you a brief update of our settlement proceedings with the EPA. And to give you a little background, the city of course has had a stormwater permit that's administered by the Commonwealth of Virginia and enforced by both the state and EPA. This permit covers the discharges from our municipal separate stormwater sewer system, our MS4, towards us the state, and imposes certain operational reporting requirements on those systems. During each permit cycle, and that permit cycle is five years, we expect one inspection of our program conducted by the state. June 4th and 5th, 2012, EPA along with the state came down and performed that two-day inspection of our program. In between that time and now, we had several, so a series of interactions back and forth between us and the EPA. They asked for additional information. We've got a draft report, and we responded to that report with comments, seeking additional information back for us, asked for additional information. Then, on September 6, 2013, the EPA released its final report. On August 15 of 2004, we received an administrative penalty order from the EPA, and we've been in negotiations with the EPA ever since. That penalty order includes a proposed civil penalty of $50,000, and it has two findings. The first finding is a failure to eliminate unauthorized discharges, which is basically your reporting, eventual reporting files, additional information they like to see as part of our dry weather sampling program, actually, part of our illicit discharge elimination program. As we go out, we say find somebody that has a legal connection to a stormwater system, say someone draining a pole into the system. We do the research, investigate, find out, and send information to that person, do the follow-up, then, if everything was taken care of, we close the case. What we get to see is documentation is where case was closed on so-and-so date. That's that finding. The second finding was failure to provide adequate staffing. This relates to our MOU with the school board, where we're required to conduct stormwater inspections of our municipal facilities under our MOU, the school board, that was supposed to conduct inspections at Burton's Point facility, but because of staff turnover and training, they did not have a person in place for about six months, and so for that six month period, we didn't have someone in place to do those inspections, and that was the second finding. The team for the city that's been involved in negotiations was myself, Youssef Khalil from Pollo Works, Diane Quick from Pollo Works, and Jeff Miller from the city attorney's The program modifications that we proposed to EPA in an attempt to reduce that fine were program modifications that we're already considering implementing. You see, I'm listed on the sheet with you. The first one is, we're going to modify some of our testing parameters in our dry weather sampling program. We're going to modify the reporting requirements as discussed for our illicit discharge control program. We're going to perform some target outreach to commercial and industrial bad actors, those people who in the past have shown a propensity to violate or have the potential to violate, we're going to send them target outreach, sort of good housekeeping measure, and then track that to see what the consequence is. We're going to formalize an SOP for our standardized municipal yard inspections, and we're going to modify the decanting facility at Pollo Works for our vector operations and street sweeper degrees. Both of these modifications, along with the reduction of the fine from $50,020 to $25,000, are going to be in two separate orders, and those will be what you'll be voting on tonight.
Let me ask you something real quick. How do these A, B, C, D, and E proposed modifications, what are the relevance that they have with the two findings here, A and B? Failure to eliminate unauthorized discharge from a reporting standpoint, and then the failure to provide adequate staffing here on the school personnel side. So those two things have very little to do with these modifications, but because we say, hey, we're going to do some more nice things, they says, okay, we'll cut it in half. They got nothing to do with each other, but thank y'all for giving us these nice things.
Overall, they
Yeah, I mean, that is, that's great. It's like slapping my cousin, and I'm rewarding you for assisting law.
They're looking at the stormwater program in its overall, and these five parameters are part of the overall program. And so by showing a series of improvements throughout the overall program, it shows that you're willing to take that extra step.
No, that's good. And they looking at it from their perspective that
They got some money for
Yeah, something else in there, and they got some money out of it. Okay, all right, very good.
15 months to get a report, and another 11 months
And thanks to the team. Who was it, you, Youssef, and who else?
Diane Quick and Jeff Miller.
Diane, okay, all right, thank you. Very good job.
Elizabeth had asked, you know, why so long, 15 months, and that's what we said, and you almost forget about that you were ever inspected. But they've really done a great job, and this is on your council agenda, so we wanted to brief you. It's on tonight's agenda. All right, the next is another good news, and good as it relates to making our city bright and beautiful. And Dennis, and Donna. Donna?
Good evening.
Good evening. How you doing, Donna?
I'm happy. Um I'm sorry, I'm I'm eager. I'm eager. Okay, well, in January, we were here to brief you on Keep America Beautiful and the initiatives, and then you authorized staff to move back forward to develop a program for Portsmouth. Tonight, before you, you have a resolution to consider endorsing Keep America Beautiful and recognizing the re-establishment of Portsmouth affiliation with Keep America Beautiful, and will be called Keep Portsmouth Beautiful. There were several things
So we've gone from the Great American Cleanup to pretty up Portsmouth, now we're going to keep Portsmouth beautiful. Okay, just trying to keep track.
Maintain the beauty.
Keep Portsmouth Beautiful, well, there are several things that we have to do to be an affiliate with, and in good standing with Keep America Beautiful. We have to pay an annual service fee, which is $300. We have to appoint and train an executive director. This is not a new position or anything. The recycling coordinator, me, will be the executive director for our affiliate. And we also had to, we had to name our affiliate. Keep Portsmouth Beautiful. Most of what Keep America Beautiful is doing now is, they kind of want that name to be branded with them, so Keep Portsmouth Beautiful, most of the cities in the area also kind of named similar. One of the things we have to do is establish an advisory committee, and we've done that this year, and these are the folks, most of them will be here for the meeting at 7:00 tonight. These are folks from all over the city that not only have a heart for their neighborhood, but a heart for Portsmouth as a whole, so this is a great group. We met, we've been meeting, and they've got some great ideas, and I'll share a couple of them.
They represent
I skipped a lot.
Geographically, John, they represent
All the areas.
All the areas of the city, quadrants.
It's pretty diverse, yes, sir.
And they'll be here later. Okay.
While she's pulling that back up, let me ask you, how do we, is this based on our honor system? How do we police ourselves? How often will it be our advisory committee here, or is there someone outside, Donna, that'll come?
I'm going to cover that in just a second. If you can hang on for a second.
I think she's got us back up.
Okay, we're back.
Good deal.
Anyway, there are certain steps that we had to do as an advisory committee. We held a community meeting with some training from people from Keep America Beautiful. That was in March. We also had a training workshop with the advisory committee in November. We also had a training workshop with the advisory committee in November. We have to have a ceremony, which hopefully be later tonight. We have to maintain good standing, which means pay the fee and do annual and semi-annual reports. And we have to implement other Keep America Beautiful initiatives. Some of those are cigarette litter prevention, National Planning Day, and graffiti hurts. We have been doing the Great American Cleanup the last few years, and America Recycles Day, and those are all Keep America Beautiful initiatives. So we'll be adding some new things. Some of the things that we're gonna be, that we've talked about as in, at the meetings, we want more involvement from schools, churches, businesses, military. We're talking about litter enforcement months, and as far as planting things, maybe possible plant native American, or native plants at our gateways. So these are just things that we've talked about so far that might start, you know, initiatives for the new year. Keep Portsmouth Beautiful will fall under the Department of General Services, which kind of makes sense because recycling and trash is under general services, the landscape division is under general services. So the Keep Portsmouth Beautiful Advisory Committee will meet every other month. But the good news is, not just that group of people that you saw those names, the invitation is open to every citizen or group that wants to participate in Keep Portsmouth Beautiful. So we're excited to include people that want to do all they can. But the good news is, the first thing that this advisory committee wanted to do, litter seems to be a major, major problem, no matter what part of the city it is. So one of the things they want to do is bring back adopt a spot. Anyway, as of this evening, it's back. So we hope. So we've got packets that everyone in the room, I expect to get a Keep Adopt a Spot packet before you leave. So find your spot that you want to adopt, and then get back with me. We want them to pick up litter four times a year. We'll provide the litter grabbers, the bags, the safety vest. Some areas, you know, we're hoping that they'll do a little more often, but four times a year, and then we're going to present a sign.
And Vanna White says.
We have, these are our proposed adopt a spot signs. We had a dilemma. We couldn't decide which one we wanted, so we're gonna let you help us with that.
Sailboat.
Yeah.
Water friends.
Now, do we have spots identified, or will we let organizations?
We're gonna have some spots that we know are major problems, but for the most part, most people want to do certain areas, and we'll allow them to-
We need to identify neighborhoods in our spots. Are there some neighborhoods that are horrible?
And, you know, we'll be going around to the civic leagues and, you know, promoting this, so.
Well, a lot of our organizations, nonprofits, Greek organizations, all were very active in this, and they all took an exit ramp or something like that. And I know a lot of those times, those things were, the sheriff would go and clean it up the day before, so it was just all ceremonial. And so we're cleaning up something that's clean, and we got neighborhoods and some other main through fares that-
Right, and, you know, we'll, our office will be monitoring those cleanups and making sure that they get done. The neighborhood, to adopt a spot, you have to clean the spot at least twice before we give you a sign. So we want to make sure you're serious about being part of the program.
There was a time, go ahead. There was a time that each school adopted a spot, and you could see the change and beautification that went all over the community, because every community took pride.
Exactly, and that's what we wanted to break back.
And it really beautified this city. We got away from it. I'm glad to see it's come back to it.
Yeah, we're excited about it.
You know, the spot I'm getting more comments about is that spot right across from our brand-new Kruger.
Kruger, yeah. That has changed.
And it's pompous grass, and I understand that it's also been placed out by the Hottest Ferry Bridge and our Welcome to Portsmouth sign. That is the ugliest stuff. It looks like weeds.
It does.
I'm sure, I'm sure it has a place somewhere, but I'm not certain that-
That's it.
Those are the places for it.
Message received. Got it.
I said I wouldn't bring that up. I was at Advanced Auto Parts last week, and two gentlemen asked me, when are we gonna go over there and cut those weeds across from Kruger? And I spent 20 minutes explaining that they weren't weeds.
That's true.
And then I went to Sam's Club in Chesapeake, and a lady stopped me, and I sat in there for 20 minutes explaining to her that they weren't weeds. And I left out of there, and I went, we gotta cut that crap down and put something out there that doesn't look like weeds. But anyway, that's not part of your-
I will say it, if you're explaining, you're losing.
If you're explaining, you're losing.
But the lighting on the Welcome to Portsmouth sign, when you come out of the downtown tunnel, is wonderful.
Pretty, that's-
Yeah, that's nice.
Go ahead, Donna.
That's beautiful.
So for more information about this, we have an email address, kbb@portsmouthva.gov. Also, we're gonna have a webpage that will go live later this week. So information about the adopt a spot, everything that's in the packet will be, you know, on the website. We'll also be able to include, you know, when we have recycling events, and so we're gonna have a Keep Portsmouth Beautiful webpage. Anyway, the good thing about Keep Portsmouth Beautiful and branding it with Keep America Beautiful, it allows us a fresh start for environmental and sustainable living initiatives, and it increases citizen engagement and involvement.
That's very important. Yes, ma'am.
I have one more question. I'm really pleased, I noticed last night, that in our kitchen right here, we have a recycled trash can, which is awesome. But you know how, I don't have one, because I don't live in a house. It says on there what can and can't go in there, since we use styrofoam plates back there, which I know can't, or cans or whatever, what should and should go in there would be a nice sign to have.
Well, actually, it's interesting that you say that, because we had a Blue Star Marker event yesterday in the mayor, and you were there. And if you notice, we had china coffee cups. And the reason for that is so we didn't have styrofoam included in our trash. There was no trash generated from that. So we're working on that very issue, trying to get all city departments to be more cognizant of the fact that we're a recycle city, and we want to, gotta clean up our own house before we take it outside.
And we got to the point of getting paid for our recycles yet.
Oh, we're working on that, Danny.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you very much.
We have a birthday boy in our midst. Todd Elliott has had a birthday, or is having a birthday.
Another one, Todd. Seems like you had a hundred of them.
Todd's gonna tell you about this great birthday celebration.
Nothing wrong with that.
Uh-huh. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. Yes, we are celebrating a birthday. Portsmouth Public Library has reached the milestone that lasts 100 years. Portsmouth Public Library. So I'm excited about that, but I have to tell you, I'm a little excited about that pompous grass. I'm thinking about planting some around my house.
You're right. You'll get a citation. You'll be explaining that.
We'll say 101. But we did turn 100, and it was on December 1st in 1914 that the Portsmouth Public Library opened its doors in a small annex, in a room, in a small annex behind the 1846 courthouse. So, and originally, it had about 5,000 volumes, most of it donated, and the librarian at the time was Esther Wilson, and our local history room bears her name to this day. Now, none of us remember that library from 19, back in 1914, but-
Why you keeping looking at Ms. Randall?
No, no. I looked over at Dennis.
With age comes wisdom.
But, but the library opened then, you know, to serve the citizens of Portsmouth. However, libraries are a reflection of the community that they serve. That library was no different. So the library that opened in 1914, that served the entire population of the city of Portsmouth, which necessitated a need to open a library that catered to black citizens in Portsmouth. Reverend W. H. Willis, and that's a name that many of you know, asked council to support a city-operated library for African-Americans. And that was in 1944, and it came to fruition in 1945 with the Portsmouth Community Library. And that library is now available as a museum, you know, so please, you know, stop by to have a look at that. And it was run by Ms. Bertha Edwards, and I did have the pleasure of working with Ms. Edwards when I was a teenager.
By the way.
Shelving books, yes. Terrific lady. And honestly, when I was a kid and working there at Portsmouth, at the main library, didn't quite appreciate the history and the things that she worked with and worked through at that particular time, but, you know, Lord, I appreciate her more and more right now. So in 1943, Ms. Helen Kirkpatrick, taking a step back, became the city librarian, and she would hold that position until she retired in 1974. In 1959, Dr. James Holly III and Dr. Hugo Owens, and most of the people know those names around this table, initiated a lawsuit to integrate the Portsmouth Public Library, and they won in 1960. But, you know, change happens a little slowly in the small southern city. In 1962, the city incorporated the Portsmouth Public Library and the Portsmouth Community Library, and opened the joint, you know, the library under one umbrella, March 18th, 1963, at 601 Court Street, which had, before that, beforehand, had been the federal building, the post office and courthouse. I think, not courthouse, post office and custom house for the city of Portsmouth. So it's gone through a lot of changes in that particular time. In 1974, Dean Burgess became the director of the library, and he held that position until 1996, and passed the baton on to Ms. Sue Burton, who was one of my mentors, and is actually the person that hired me as a shover back when I was 16. So, you know, as a young librarian herself. So we've gone through a lot over the years. Went through three fires, the most recent one on Christmas of 2010. Yeah, I had Rolades for dinner that day, but, and two in 1988. We now have four locations serving the public, and we've gone from those 5,000 items to about 300,000 or so odd items in the collection. So, you know, we've done a lot along the way, and we've enjoyed very strong support from our council, from the community. You know, we issue out over 60,000 library cards, so, you know, we get good support from the community, and I won't be happy until all 96,000 citizens are holding one. And I'm pleased to say that our city leadership all have library cards, so they're setting a good example for everyone to follow here. I had, I did bring a sign also, and this is also on display out at Churchland on the new sailboat. So we had redesigned our logo with the sailboat, celebrating 100 years, 1914 to 2014. So, you know, we're very excited. We have-
Sailboat on a boat.
On a boat.
Most unique.
Yes, yes, I think so too. I love that logo.
I like it, yes.
It's not because I had input on that, but-
I love it.
Members of council all received invitations to a program that staff is having this week, and that program is being provided by the Portsmouth Public Library Foundation as well as the, as Town Bank. So I hope to see you then, and we invite the public to come into any of our library locations on Saturday, December 13th, this Saturday, to share cake with us as we, from 2:00 to 3:00, 2:00 to 3:00 P.M. Come on out to any of our four library locations, we'll be serving up cake, and, you know, just looking forward to serving the city for another 100 years. We now do a variety of things beyond books. You know, we provide services online 24/7, downloadable eBooks, audiobooks, et cetera. So we still promote literacy, and we've been promoting it for 100 years, and like I said, we're gonna do it for 100 more. You'll do most of it without me, but, you know, but it's all, it's gonna be all good. So are there any questions for me regarding the library?
Well, that's good. Very excited to hear that and your presentation. If you can work on it by now in council meeting, I'd like for you to come up and take that speech you got there and get it down to about five minutes and say it again in front of the camera, because our citizens need to hear about that and know about it, but get it down to five minutes' time.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good job.
I'll leave the part about the pompous grass out. Hope you already had the five minutes.
Thank you very much. Good. That's very good. Good news, good news. And when is the event, by the way, Todd?
That is Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00, sir.
Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00, okay.
We have two additional items. On your agenda tonight is the second reading of the amendments to the zoning ordinance. Okay, you had it on first reading. At your last council meeting, a person spoke during the public hearing about Amendment Number 24. And Amendment Number 24 is the amendment to the zoning ordinance that looks like this. I know you can't see it, but all the red language that's either struck over or added is the addition. The language in black is already in the code. This is the language that deals with the regulation of construction equipment. And because I keep my ear to the ground, I've listened, you've gotten comments, I'm recommending that you send Amendment Number 24 back to the planning commission. And at the same time, we're in the process of coming up with a definition for not only construction equipment, but construction vehicles. Now, you can't make that change tonight, because that definition appears in another section of the code. So what I recommend that you do is, when you adopt this, part of your motion is to send Amendment Number 24 back to the planning commission for reconsideration. They get a chance to hear from the public, and when it comes back, they'll come back with the definitions that are necessary to take the mystery out of it.
That's a good move. I applaud that.
All right. Any other questions?
Was there four people there? I got the emails, and I got all that stuff from the same gentleman to contact the y'all, but look, this stuff is, are we gonna build a water fountain out here for one person, or are we gonna build it for 96,000?
Was there four people here that had a problem with that? Or is that?
I'm giving you a recommendation. You don't-
If there wasn't, I'm not interested in sending it back to the planning commission. I was there when they, when they beat this thing to death over the last couple of months.
That, that ordinance, the way it reads tonight, is about as clear as mud. You know, the definition of the equipment involved needs to be defined.
I just didn't care for the email.
As it stands, it's not defined.
I don't like that either, but I like, I like fixing it together. I like fixing it together. If, if the planning commission's got additional amendments to send in regards to equipment, then I think it ought to be done together and not in two pieces.
Well, and we laid out a process. We're doing this as, doing these amendments in batches, and this batch is the first batch, and there'll be another batch that follows, and this will be in the second batch. For example, it was pointed out to us that even though our first name is Porch, there's no mention of port activity in our zoning ordinance, and we need to fix that. And so there'll be a series, the next batch comes, Bob.
Good evening, Mayor, right, members of council. The next batch will start briefing the planning commission in January.
I'm certain that the planning commission, if they're made aware of our concern, can remedy the problem so they can get it back to us.
The planning commission has two liaisons who aren't concerned, so unless there's consensus of concern- So, unless there's consensus of concern on council, we don't need to send it back to them.
Is there consensus or not?
I don't see why...
I think we've gone through, I mean, I do want clarity, but we can't be wasting a lot of staff hours and times, because one or two people keep trying to shoot holes into whatever we do, because you're never gonna have something that satisfies everybody.
Everybody.
And I think the individual we're referring to, we have gone beyond the need to explain to him and them that those areas are not a major concern, but they continue to keep bringing those areas up.
I think when, when Bob said, if you already have equipment in your yard, this is not impacting you, I think right there...
It's not, that Bob says is not part of that ordinance. You know, 15 years from now, Bob might not be in that position.
Right.
We...
No, that's a lovely position to put a planning director to.
We need, we need to get a consensus one way or the other.
Okay, we take it back on that. All in favor of taking that back?
Taking, sending it back.
Okay, two. All in that? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Send it as like it is. Thank you.
Okay. Also, I sent you this report on CDAs because of the discussion that we had. It came about, this CDA is Community Development Authority, which are allowed under the Code of Virginia. And I wanted to make sure, first, that you got this memorandum, and, second, that it was, answer any questions that you might have. This got initiated for several different reasons, primarily because of the rezoning request that was submitted for the Walmart grocery store. And that application has been withdrawn as of today. So, it's not, it's not a pending item. But I recommend that you read this. CDAs, there are not many in Virginia. There are 24. And they're created as a public authority with the authority to issue bonds. And the bonds, the debt service, is either handled by a special tax that the CDA, the authority, asks you to levy, or a special assessment. And again, only 24 of these things are in Virginia. And if, if you can visualize the urban corridor that runs down 95 and 64, that's where most of them lie, except two are in the western part of the state, a couple. But most are in that, that urban crescent or the golden crescent. 11 of those 24 are in financial difficulty of some sort. And we've, we wanted you to understand the context that CDAs operate. These are very iffy investments for the people who invest in them. Most of the local governments opt to do the special assessment, because they don't want the public to be confused about the real estate tax, the special tax. And so, our CDA is handled by an assessment. Now, the assessment is based on the use of the property, as set forth in this memorandum. It's so many dollars if it's residential, it's so many dollars if it's commercial. So, that was predetermined back about six or seven years ago. And that assessment goes until the bonds are paid off. Now, when, just assume that this is the CDA boundaries. When it's one property owner, and that's the developer, the developer is responsible for all the fees that are assessed within the CDA. The minute that one parcel is sold, then let's say there's 100 parcels in here, you got 99 left that are handled by the developer, and then one with a different owner. And so, that owner gets the assessment fee and pays that until the debt service is paid off. You can prepay. The CDA allows the property owner to prepay. Now, when the tax bill goes out, the city treasurer is, is responsible for collecting all of our taxes. The state code puts the responsibility of the collection of any special tax or the assessment fee on the treasurer, whether it's the city treasurer or county treasurer. As you know, our CDA is currently in the arrears, they're not current on the assessments. And the state code says that on a delinquency like that, they have the same importance as delinquent taxes. They're not relegated to behind the painter's lien that's on, or whatever, the mechanic's lien. So, I wanted to make sure that you got this, and that if you got any questions, be glad to answer them, meet with you.
What did Walmart, what did they cite for pulling out?
I don't think they gave us citation, do you, or not?
There was nothing in their request that they wish to...
They just withdrew it?
Yeah. All right. Thank you, sir.
Is that it?
And...
Council members, you have two additional items that were added on your agenda, and Mr. Wilson can explain both of them.
Sure. One of the items is a resolution for council to consider pertaining to the charter change, charter changes that have been, that are being requested, and for which there is an advertised public hearing tonight. The other is a motion authorizing me to file a petition with the circuit court to ask the court to issue a writ of election to fill, to set an election date to fill the vacant position of the Commonwealth's Attorney. So, those are, the motion, I don't know when you'll, the motion, will that come at the end?
It's after the first resolution, after the charter resolution. They're both under items submitted by council members.
Okay. Okay. Then we'll have a motion for closed meetings after, we're gonna ask for you all to enter into a, into a closed meeting after the regular session to discuss a matter of litigation.
Okay. Council members, at this time, we will break for dinner, and we will come together again at 7:00 p.m. for the regular meeting.
Roger. Thank you. We're going to plug?